All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. First of all, I welcome everybody here. Want to throw off a little different. First, I want to thank everybody for taking time to come out today. And we're going out doing important work for the county, committing new laws, and probably occurred by now. Monday, I ordered a county employee to submit a drug test.
Good. I can interrupt you here. We've been advised before the team, we need an attorney present. I don't know if he's still on or what.
You need to have him talk to you. Can y'all talk to him?
I was under the impression that he was gonna be here.
And we got a... Andy O'Malley here. Hey, Mr. Big. Okay. We're gonna get down to everything here to sort the business up again. Actually, I like that everybody taking time to come out. We do report and work to try to move the county forward. Again, like I say, most of you probably heard by now about having to submit a name and drug test Monday. This was after been prepared for consideration and actually been playing like for a couple Just seeing different things and hearing different things. I like making a call while I hear a lot. See a lot of times you don't see what you really see and you hardly ever hear what you're supposed to hear, so. I wish I could say everybody passed, but unfortunately they didn't. We had four individuals, which are named, who will be named as through now, tested positive. Having one test is still pending. By the directive of the administrative code, the law and government made grant funds and I just can't allow individuals or anybody to be in any kind of county equipment or vehicle without making sure everything is what it is. I don't have the results back yet, but I wouldn't have them in my hand until they're paid for. But, you know, I can't just turn an eye and let it go, so. Right now, these employees continue to serve us and, you know, it seems sure the county won't be ignored by this manager, you know. And me, I don't very well how troubles that it is. I've got a brother that's no longer here now. It's probably just due with the roads and stuff and, you know, a lot of families struggle with it and it's a sad thing, but, you know, in a minute, we're gonna be back out and make these sessions and see how the fiscal court wants to handle it. And then I'll, you know, come back out and report to the... Before we get started, I want everybody to stand and we salute the country. We believe in the United States of America. I want to hear a prayer.
Thank you. God, our actions and our lives, and our God, we thank you for this privilege to two hours together one more time. When we come together, thank you as a county, as we ask the order that you lead and direct our hearts and minds and let us make decisions together for all of counties. Thank you that you are on the cross, that we do lead the eternal everlasting life to life. Bless each one that makes a choice to keep. Go with us to the remainder of this meeting and this day, lead, direct, carry on the work we will take into the side. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pray that the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda is a consideration and approval for the payment of fourteen hundred and fifty dollars for the drug testing of the county employees.
Motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? I want to second that motion. Donnie Bush.
I like to say something about good. There's not a person in here that's not been affected by drugs. We also have families who know somebody, but nobody has a problem with drug testing, I'm sure of that. However, in this instance, there's no allocation of money for it in the budget. There's not even a line out for it. Number two, the fiscal court was not consulting in any way prior to this testing. Number three, administrative code was not followed because on page seventy-nine, it clearly states that samples to be tested shall be outpainted at the breadth of the county health department. So I vote no. And also, since the administrative code, a random test, long detail like a CDL driver emergency work, since the administrative code. So I vote no.
No. No. Any more?
No.
You have a change.
What I got a problem with is that there's several people that missed yesterday. If you're gonna do this, it needs to be everybody in all departments. The way I understand it, some departments done it, some didn't. I'm sure some of them has opted out of it. In fact, a jailer did. And opted out administrative code for himself. And there's no money for it. I mean, if we were gonna do this, I think we should have done it, you know, put it in the budget. If you were working on this for all year, I mean, you might as well do this two, three months from now. But no money allocated for it.
We've had a voter ban.
No.
Okay. I want what's up for discussion. I am the executive director of this. I'm not gonna give the admin code. It wasn't just this, it wasn't just the county road department. It was also here in the courtroom. There acted one of the corners, there acted one of the jails. So, well, okay, it was random. What'd you say?
How many departments was left out that didn't do the drug test? And how many employees left was off yesterday or Monday?
The ones that do, that do, the five of administrative code.
Not on some departments.
No.
Well, we had some departments that actually came here and actually left. I don't know who, whose direction they were under. But again, you said the one I wanted to go for.
How many employees was actually off from that? Now, do you have a...
I could go in there and get your road department. We had Bridget Mike was off. She called in sick. She hadn't returned to work yet. Chris Stamper, town head, Monday, he gone vacation this week. Ronnie Fee took off this weekend, wife on vacation. And then there was another one over there. There were four of this, and I remember I think we were a little bit late at the time.
Are those four all being drug tested later?
Oh, yeah.
What kind of plan we did?
Here, well, I planned on testing everybody. I actually planned on testing everybody Monday. Nobody knew about this test except me, the boy who got me in touch with the doctor, and then the one that actually done the test. My secretary, I had to wait till she came in Monday to get me in this lane. So I did choose to have the drug test. I actually planned on it, like I said, a couple months ago.
Wasn't you consulting? Why didn't you consult the fiscal court prior to two months ago?
If I would have said we're gonna have a drug test, in my opinion, you all would have said, "Well, we're waiting for everybody to have a drug test."
Have you got much, no money?
That's my opinion.
We put the budget, money forward. You should have said this.
Don't worry about the money for it. Then I'll raise the money. The court were taxpayers. I mean, having, you know, a guy called me up late, he said, "Hey."
That was that situation?
He said, "I'm gonna put the money." He said, "I'll get right the money. You busy in the county?"
The drug test ain't a problem, but the administrative code is. But we're not going by the administrative code? That's what it says in it. That's the problem. And a random, like I stated, random drug test, clerk's station, administrative code, all of it, a CDL driver and emergency personnel, brief. I didn't make the administrative code be served.
I intended to, I intended to drug test everybody. And I still intend to. I think even us as leader, even us as elected officials should be drug tested.
I guess probably, I don't got a CDL.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, I just say every point.
I fight them all.
The guys were just drug testing. I have to see them talk. Period.
Hey.
You're voting no. Okay. We're discussing when we get into the empty session. The motion failed, but I'm gonna raise the money to pay for the drug test myself to make sure it gets carried through. Next, consideration of possible action concerning certain county personnel. And at this time, I'm gonna go make a motion to go into the empty session. Do we have a second? Donnie Bush.
Aye.
Ray Moore.
Aye.
You have a change.
Aye. Randy, you want to comment on this before we go in?
For what?
The drug test in the administrative code or just give us a little attitude?
I agree. I mean, I'll be honest with you. I don't have it in front of me to read, and I haven't read a parking over here.
I did it, but it's just...
But also, if you keep on reading them literally, it seem like a drug test that we don't...
Maybe you might be right. You know...
It don't, it don't, it don't seem like to me anybody that voted no to pay for a drug test is supporting drugs.
Well, no, I disagree with you there. We're voting no. We don't believe in the law.
I don't.
Since you guys are going out, we'll get my topic out here. If we can't go this right here, why do we have to... Why do we gotta, what would you throw at the door in there? You're ready.
I don't know. Go ahead with it.
Yeah.
Let's go.
Ellis.
He's the judge.
They better make sure they're doing it legally. That is not random, having everybody test. That's not legal.
We got a list of right?
That is not random. Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to come back out and take the session. Let's take it. Donnie Bush.
Aye.
Ray Moore.
Aye.
Okay. Considerable action concerning certain county personnel, and we went into the empty session and I disagree, but it ain't the first time. They feel the drug test was done wrong. I still think it's at my will, I can have it. But I'm on consideration approval to budget enough money to drug test all them, to drug test all county employees and elected officials. So I'm gonna make a motion on that.
Motion.
Do we have a second? I'll second that motion. Donnie Bush.
No.
Robert Earl.
Aye.
Ray Moore.
No.
You have a change.
No.
I vote aye. I want what's up for discussion. The three that voted no, why in the world would you vote no not to pay to have an employee drug tested? I mean, if already had a drug test, that you're all up to pay it legally, that I do, and I ain't got a lot of results back yet, but the names ain't gonna get out. We got four that tested positive. I don't know what you, 'cause I got kids on the downed road. I sure don't wanna take a chance on him being an over, especially being a county judge by somebody's employee through the county because I neglecting the... What's important here is the money. That's the problem.
If we wanna do that, Judge, listen, why don't we change the administrative code? Let's do it a certain way, just to...
I still think administrative code, administration code allows me to do that. It will. I'm the executive administrator. I suspect drugs. I drug tested. And I ain't good reasons to suspect.
In the month of June, we should have discussed all this stuff prior for the next year.
We sure should have. How many have you been on the court?
Nine years.
Nine years. How many times you drug tested in nine years?
I've never drug tested.
But you're eight.
But I wouldn't care a bit to pull one anytime.
No, no, no. I'm talking about, I'm talking about with employees. I'm talking about with employees. No, I'm not talking...
I've been here twenty-six years, Tom, again. Drug tested one time with the rest of the county garage, one time. Twenty-six years.
That's when I was on the court. I know I was on the court, we drug tested one time. Suspected drug abuse. How about you, Donnie?
What?
Why would you not wanna, why did you vote no on budgeting money? Man, I think we need to back up and look at this budget we've got. Something out of order here. Budget money or take money from DLT or do the road fund, do the drug test out of road funds.
You've sent you all the budget. I don't think you even sent DLT the right budget, did you? Am I right on that?
I don't know.
That's what I thought. Or I said that you sent a different budget.
Who told you that?
Part of the local government.
Did you? Robert Brown texted me yesterday and told me we need to sign the, put the right date on it.
From what I understand, I think it's the same budget.
I asked him personally if he had the one that where y'all zeroed up the budget for draft and pipeline, and he said, "Yeah."
What a treasure. He spoke to him?
I did. I did. I asked Robert, "Is Jack gonna send me a copy of the budget that you had submitted after separating me did?" And it's the budget that you originally submitted for the magistrate's vote going in, and it is stamped received by DLT on seven, eight, nineteen.
Got a copy right here in a little bit.
Somebody go get a review. My secretary.
They couldn't make deals like her boss.
And I tried to say it one time, I talked to Robert Brown.
She's not here.
Anyway, anyway, just get off the budget deal. Robert Brown had been sending in, he was sending in July the second. He told Richard that he had the one that was zeroed out, but he thinks it back takes time, so. I don't know what time you talked to that bitch, and I was, Richard talking about the three, and thank you for...
This morning.
It was about three yesterday evening, so. But again, let's get back to business here. Why wouldn't you budget enough money to have all of your drug tests?
We should have done it.
You all don't think it was done right. You think it needs to be done at breadth of the health department.
Department.
So why are you saying you don't wanna pay to have it done then?
There's no money allocated to do it.
A allocated, we talked about it.
The money's not in my mind, I give my budget.
To me, this is more important than paying a vector bill.
Are there gonna be other happenings to do it? We're gonna have to adjust the budget on it that we're not aware of right now?
I can't say that. I don't know that. I don't, budget, we really want to back what we got built with two months, two months and a half. I talked to Vince Lane yesterday, and we're gonna get a bad audit, we're gonna pay a bill. He said we had a fair bill. We done anything, we had a fair bill.
We all need to get on the same page, going today.
Let's get on the page here on this drug testing. I ain't satisfied with three, two votes on this. To me, this is the most important thing we voted on since I've been in office.
Let me speak up as an employee, Judge, if that's all right.
We're about taking, we're discussing this.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to discuss it.
You ain't gonna discuss anything.
Drug testing, something that affects me as well as any other county employee. What you gonna do? Put me out, Judge?
LD, play me that.
LD, come and get me, buddy. Come and get me, LD.
Leave it out. We're going out.
Now, John.
He's going out here.
Listen, we'll have a talk, but...
We in here to take care of business, man.
I'm just trying to have a conversation as an assistant.
So we're gonna... Let's go out here and talk. It's a goddamn shame. It's scary, Judge. Disorder now. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm being disordered, I'm not taking it. Again, what's important here, boys? And I ain't kidding, this is the most important thing we voted on to, since I've been in office, now that I'm in office four years.
I agree with you on that. I agree with you on that, Jim, but we have the right money.
I give you a chance to budget the money, take the money and put in there to do that. I could spend twenty thousand dollars and you can take your line out of whatever. I ain't saying...
Just calm down, man. Come back.
You ain't got, you ain't got me to take money off your service.
He wants to get his personal property.
He can get after me. He can come back and get after me.
This is bullshit, man.
Again, are there any where we can take money out of? If you ain't, I tell you what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna call it a goldmine. I'm gonna take it upon myself to see if we can get enough taxpayers that's already burdened with taxes, that pays taxes for us to run the county and have, and have a drug test for our employees. Can't make the elected official do it, but I'd like, I'd like to encourage all of the other offices that are opt out of the admin code, or opt out of our admin code, and encourage him to do the same with their employees. That'd be the sheriff department, county clerk, county department, any county attorney. I think that's all I can talk to. So if y'all don't wanna do that, y'all say it's not my problem at all, I'm taking sleep on that.
Are you exploding yourself?
Yes, sir. I'm putting myself on it first. I don't think it's funny, but you can laugh at your own team.
I'm gonna make five hundred dollars on it.
Okay, everybody, I appreciate everybody. There's people who are here and where it is a special session, I can't resist it. Can anybody speak?
I think you better address this with the county attorney there or the legal aspect of this.
And just ask to be contacted, don't say the county aspect.
No, I mean, I'm just...
Doesn't be done right.
On the part of this court, I just think it's...
Haven't it done wrongly? You tell me haven't it done wrongly?
I'm asking for the legal aspect of it. I'm not a lawyer.
Okay, but you tell me that.
What's your question?
And he don't take a fund, what he suggested, ain't no funding whatever fund, but to pay for a drug test by all county employees. Is that legal, in your opinion?
Don't have to be me. I'm, like I say, I already got one that said he would do it.
I've never heard tell of it, but I mean, I'm just...
I have neither, but if the bill...
I'm trying to say you some of it, Don. You said you put twenty-five thousand dollars in for county, for legal fees, for the fees of, and don't see fit enough to have a drug test and done.
Oh, I can say that.
Let's go on to the next thing. Approval of minutes for the special session, April first, April eighteen, May third, May twenty-fourth, May thirty-first. You have a motion. Do we have a motion, approval of minutes?
I think he's out. Here's been addressed, this makes it for the third time.
Motion by Robert Earl. I second that motion. Somebody asked me the other day, said, "Why don't you make a second?" If I think it's important enough to play it on again, I think it's important enough for y'all to vote on it. Ray Moore.
Third time I voted on this, and I'm voting no.
Okay. LD's change.
Same here. Third time I'm voting no.
No. Donnie Bush.
Been addressed, due pretty good break.
Yeah, you're right.
By majority of the fiscal court. Therefore, I vote no.
All right. Porter.
Aye.
All right. Approval of the minister regular station, April twenty-third, twenty-ninth, then. Well, spoken on that. Porter, may I second? I'll second that motion. LD's change.
No.
Donnie Bush.
Already been addressed. Due pretty good break.
You vote aye or nay, or you're voting no?
No.
Robert Earl.
Aye.
Motion, please. Consideration, certain bench trimbers, there's a corner training, addicted corner fifty looks, and George Griffin, and he should have some ham in there. Do we have a motion on that?
Judge is on for perdean mileage, send this to Jamie back here. So we ain't putting your...
Was that for the train, Dave?
It's the perdean mileage.
What was the total on it?
A hundred and seventy-seven dollars, sixty-two cents for Clifton and the same amount for George.
And what, I think it's a full of...
The month of November.
That's amazing, though, right?
And that was by the door training for them.
I got four of seventy dollars total.
That's what I thought it was. Porter, I made a motion, and I'll second. I don't think I second on that. Donnie Bush.
Already been approved at June twenty-fifth break meeting by majority.
Yeah, you're right.
No.
No. Roy Darrell.
Uh.
Roy Moore.
No.
Bill's changing.
No.
Alright. I'm gonna get you boy these votes, and I'm gonna tell them, ready, you make things.
They've been approved, they've been approved on it, Judge. Right to check. So we got this, right to check.
On that.
Right to check, it's already been voted on.
When was it approved on?
June twenty-fifth.
What time?
At the regular time meeting, we already approved by a majority.
You ain't got no ruling on that, meeting was set at six thirty. Meeting was for six thirty, that's the illegal meeting. Go on.
It's your.
That's my opinion. My star number sixty-two.
Right to check.
Uh, number ten, considerations approval of financial payment and appropriate due due. We have a motion. May I second? I'll second you. Lonnie Bush. Lonnie Bush.
Make your decision later on that.
Uh, financial statement. Oh, yeah. Before y'all vote on that, the financial statement, if you'll look, is the April financial statement, I top of it with the judge about it, and sent you an email. The road fund balance that showed you have, it's overstated by two hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred forty-four dollars. And if you look at the bottom half of your financial statement reconciliation, from the month of April, she's reporting the ending bank balance as, it's a little over one point four million. But if you actually look at the bank statement, the ending balance was one million, one hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred seventy-two dollars and eighty-four cents. So this does not accurately, I'm talking about the road fund, does not accurately represent what happened in the road fund.
Is that where we took the two eighty-three out of the road fund for the truck, that could be, I mean, the two eighty-three could be transferred out of?
No, we didn't do that till May, and uh, I had access, I got the bank statement as far back as March, and this was something in March, you didn't make that transfer till May, well, my thoughts are, and I mean, I don't know, but I think at some point there was just an error, potential error made in the recording of expenses, and she meant to go back and fix it. I don't know if she forgot or wasn't able to, but to temporarily make it balance, she forced reconcile the account by making, by recording the bank balances, whatever she had to, to make it look good and balanced, and and that's what caused your road fund to be overstated, and that uh, we, you all used that balance to make your budget for the road. And as a result, we're gonna have to do a bu, a negative budget amendment and cut the road fund by actually, a little bit more, that's like three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, and so any thoughts that y'all have.
Is there any thoughts you made, made, made a, that didn't write down?
So, any thoughts you all have, as far as in the road fund, where we can cut share with me at some point, because we'll have to present a budget amendment on that at the end of the month, and do that. And then just one more thing, Judge, um, the quarterly report, because it's wrong in March, was prompted, that was against D L G. So I, we'll, we'll keep me in contact and see what we have to do there.
Okay. With that said, uh, Lonnie Bush.
No.
Roy Darrell.
Uh.
Maybe more?
No.
Bill's changing.
No.
And shortly comes back, shoot off a little bit, we're looking at now for sugar. Okay, consideration approval of budget transfer.
No.
Eleven, fifteen.
For presses.
Yeah, I, I top of, I was eleven through fifteen, I, I got an email from Robert Brown, cause what I wanted to ask him, I never thought that once you're in our new fiscal year, that you can go back and make changes to old years fiscal budget, whether that's a mint budget transfers, amendment, or whatever, he did it, and I know he backed, and I have a copy of the email right here with me, and he says after six thirty, you cannot make any change, any transfers, amendments, or whatever, to the old year budget, it has to stay.
So these are, this should regard to the transfer of all the bills that are due.
Uh, eleven, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, now as far as the bills, if they go back, there's claims that they didn't approve. If they wanna go back and approve those, we'll have to void the checks that were dated in June, run through it once, with July that's on. So I have to do that, but as far as the transfer limits for last fiscal year, they can't do that.
So really, eleven, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, you just need to go ahead and set it to the side.
Except those transfers that I gave you.
Third, third time in consideration, I think, uh, that, that one. Eleven, twelve.
Right, now, on eleven, we do need to look at the transfers I gave you for the new fiscal year, you know, when you asked me about.
Uh, you want to pay the one one thousand four hundred?
Yeah, and all those are, it's just uh.
Well, let's see.
Moving the money so we can pay my home bill and then the interest bill decisions.
That was a, that was a three hundred some dollar interest thing on.
The.
What number, what number is that on, is that on appropriation of budget transfer?
It's right in front.
Eleven?
About eleven.
Yeah.
Should be changed.
It's right in front of your appropriation condition report. It says moving appropriations to the transfer calling twenty-one thousand four hundred. And all they're just, the transfers, there were those two invoices, and then the inter fund transfer, the twenty thousand dollar, and their fund transfer from the L G A to general, which is on down the agenda, is included on here too, and that's, you know, if you approve of that, it's also on.
Okay, so we need to, um, there's that, there's consideration approval for budget transfer, there's twenty-one thousand four hundred. We have a motion on that.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Uh, Bill's changing.
Uh.
Lonnie Bush.
Uh.
Roy Darrell.
Uh.
Ray Moore.
Uh.
Motion carries. Number twelve, this is consideration approval of inter transfer. Yes, the, the twenty-one to the O P A.
Uh, that's actually, you got that on twenty-nine, the other inter fund transfers are from prior fiscal year, I just left it. So we're gonna set aside twenty-nine on the second page, you got the twenty thousand dollar.
Twenty-nine, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so this, uh, number twelve, we really got this, you go ahead and just, uh.
Skip it.
Read that. Thirteen, consideration approval for payments of all legal bills.
No.
May I second? And again, we got bill, uh, got a jail vehicle worked out right now, I might wanna prove a little more, P dollars, for the bills are paid up. Talk to Vince Lane yesterday, or consider the judges, he said we, I'm waiting on service, and he was coming back, he was at John Martin's office, said it'd be worth me getting a, a rider for, for bill not being paid. I don't know if y'all know or not, when the bill is turned to the end of submitted, we supposed to pay within thirty days. This could do everything with standing over. So we have a second on approval for paying all legal bills. You gonna make that second? Ray Moore?
No.
Bill's changing.
No.
Lonnie Bush.
It's already been addressed.
Yeah, your name. Yeah, your name?
No.
Uh. I'm gonna move on to discussion a little bit. You've already been paid, you're ain't been paid, you have a motion to pay it, you got another change, make a motion to pay it, it's definitely be paid.
Right to check.
Uh, we want.
Right to check.
You made a motion, I did.
We already addressed.
Are you making a motion to go and make y'all pay the bills?
June twenty bill.
Was that a motion, is that a motion you're making?
It's already been addressed.
So you're saying I'm not paying bills?
It's already been addressed.
How about you, Ray?
I've addressed this once before.
What's that?
Paying bills.
Paying bills.
Yes.
All the bills is in there now?
Not all that's in there now, don't want, I presume.
Yeah, why, why, why would you vote much for illegal bills? You done it once, and ain't gonna do it again?
Well, no.
Which is third time, it's been, yeah, it's about the course.
Well, you were generally people that come, wanna know about bills paid, so you made a motion, say.
It's already been addressed. Don't wanna give you any more to check.
Alright.
Make a vote to check.
You, you, you give it to Brandon, and he took it to Frank, and he put it on here.
Watch, keep it right to check, right to check. We've already.
I ain't heard you prove it, you prove it now?
At June, June twenty-fifth, regular porting, we've already.
Six thirty was regular porting, where's you at?
We show his code for about another team time, but.
Go on with the next thing. Consideration approval of place out for guilt, you're worried about it, number eighty-three, number three oh five, one thirty-three seventy-seven, if funds got available, I guess the funds got available Monday, because y'all voted on that to twenty-fifth, too.
Forty?
I'm gonna lay it up in a motion to, to pay this.
It's already been addressed.
No, that's lack of motion in.
No.
You made a motion? Uh, I'm gonna second that motion. Ray Moore.
Yes.
We don't wanna see them.
Bill's changing. Hey, we gotta be taking a vote here. Bill's changing.
It's already been addressed.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it is, I think, already addressed, but I know that these guys need their money, but if it takes us going through this.
Yeah, your name.
To get you a right to check.
Yeah, your name.
So we're right here, I vote yeah, yes.
Oh, man. Roy Darrell. Motion carries.
We only got five days.
Uh, as far as, I already give your money.
That's exactly right.
But how about these people with, uh, cancer time and all these?
They're already been voted on.
That, that has to?
We getting.
Right to check, Judge. Consideration.
If we're pretty.
If you think we're in the room, I want to ask you for it, please.
Yeah, you're authority, that's the lead visitor, I ain't gonna tell you. I'm like the fish like you.
That's right.
I ain't, I ain't count. Just ask my big question, was his, was his bill on the claim, please, that we approved?
Mine being, it's my claims court, I'm tomorrow, I bow.
Hey, let's just get on the.
You've, you've got this ticket from the judge, correct?
Consideration and amendment of all necessary procedures to adopt voter lane, fellow lane, one creek into the channel.
Motion.
I'm sure with Roy Darrell. Do we have a second? I can't put on her, I can't, I'll second it. Uh. Roy Darrell. Ray Moore.
No.
Bill's changing.
No, already voted.
Lonnie Bush.
Already been addressed, June twenty-fifth.
Yeah, you're right. Consideration approval of sixty-five hundred dollars in version of twenty-twelve not charger for the, uh, sheriff department, amount out of all beverage control.
I'm gonna make that motion.
Okay, you have a second? I'll second that motion. Bill's changing.
Yes.
Lonnie Bush.
Yeah.
Roy Darrell. Ray Moore.
Uh.
Motion carries. Okay, consideration of resolution concerning occupational and net profit tax relief for the act of voluntary disclosure. We have read that, Chris. Here, I guess, I guess, consideration of resolution concerning occupational tax and net profit and tax relief for the act of voluntary disclosure. Uh, I need a motion on that.
Vote.
You have a second on it? I'll second that motion. Uh, wait, ready, Chris, make a, make a, make a deal. Resolution of the Breck's Fifth Court, whereas the fifth court has caused a one percent tax to be levied upon relations paid in net profit terms of advantage of the Breck County. And whereas ordinance for which such taxes have been levied provides for a penalty for all amounts of pain passed or taxed orally assigned due. And whereas such penalties are assessed in addition to collection of any interest owed on the linked sums. And whereas such penalties are assessed irrespective of whether the delinquent amounts owed voluntarily report to the county for whether the county is forced to expend considerable resources to find such delinquencies. And whereas the levying of these penalties carries a punitive effect, and whereas the punitive effect occurs to delinquent taxpayers who voluntarily comply with the provision of fiscal force to have an equal tax. And whereas penalties assessed to many corporate taxpayers operating within boundaries of county vary assessing negative effects as payment of such penalties would be required to be disclosed in taxpayer's form, ten K followed by U S Securities and Exchange Commission. And whereas, in order to present the most positive image reasonably possible to the investing public, most companies wish to minimize the amount spent in payment of penalties, and whereas this punitive effect discourages any delinquent taxpayers voluntarily coming into mind as the look back period. Will act as five to seven years limit to maximum effect for such payments. And whereas the creation of incentive voluntarily complying with tax orders by establishing three year maximum look back period voluntarily complying taxpayers that will ensure the delinquent payer would owe no more than the previous three years' balance and any applicable interest on the delinquent balance, we encourage individuals to report outstanding balances and delinquencies rather than forcing the county to go through exhaustive means to bring the payer through compliance. And whereas voluntary compliance of delinquent taxpayers will place more counts on the occupation of tax road with the county allowing the county to more easily assess taxes owed in time and compliance for more accounts in the future. And whereas the cost of consultants and lethal professional need to bring delinquent payers into compliance with potentially be avoided if voluntary compliance were properly incentivized. Now therefore, be resolved by the Red Fifth Court effective July one twenty-nine, and any delinquent taxpayer voluntarily reporting an amount owed to the county in relation to the topation and or net profit tax order should be liable and on hold in the balance that be owed the county for the previous three years, and all applicable interest on such amounts owed subject to the aforementioned ordinance less any penalties involved by such ordinance. So long as such delinquencies are placed in ninety-eight years of voluntary disclosure. Be, be it resolved perfectly that any delinquencies owed by voluntarily reporting taxpayer not paid to the county in ninety-eight years of such initial voluntary disclosure shall warrant the cost of the benefits of protection of this resolution and shall be settled to all applicable penalties in the back period imposed by the aforementioned. Okay, with that said, uh, I'd love to take him, I want to take a minute to talk to everyone about this same item in particular. For most time, I brought this resolution in consideration of the court, uh, I think this is the third time that we've been brought to be voted on. The one thing, the handful that had, have, uh, collection, but again, uh, your occupational tax order is one of the toughest in the state, they provide a twenty-five percent penalty per year for anyone who ended paying them. You think that might encourage folks to pay with your own? In fact, it's just opposite, by providing everyone with a liquid account, no one's seen to come forward with a lengthy look back period returning pursuit of dollars in the debt, in the, uh, in the game of just getting fifty cash. Uh, we got people that come in and, and pay stuff up if they see a benefit in it, but we're, we're happy to encourage people to stay in the ring, and make it harder for well-being and family to business to operate. Thank you for the, for the. I want to change this and make it work, work for the court, and take. I wanna change this and make it work, it won't, it work for courts and take British county to some of the most outdated business policies of the state to some have the most cutting edge of them. This resolution would make British county the very first local juridistic in Kentucky to pass a law granting release to families and businesses to volunteer disclose. Instead of having the hard speeches, consultants, and even more expensive lawyers to update their tags and threatening good people like criminals, like, and treating good people like criminals. This resolution will help later grow by shortening their look back from a period of seven years to three years. If they're volunteer come in, we have a little go back three years, pay it full, and, uh, to me, that we encouraging them to come in and do something. The doctors who come in and say hello with us, we won't have to hunt them down, we won't have to eliminate all the penalties. Again, it generate money for us, and we face it. And we would place it under laws that it stay here right now, let it stand right now. I wanna make it easier possible for everyone to be a good citizen in British county that had the chance to be leader of the pack instead of bringing up a rear. And I do, I think this is a role model, I think if we start this, I think other counties will jump on it, uh. The state here had a forgiveness plan of several years ago, and I forget how many dollars it generated by people just volunteering to pay and, and, and not have to pay a penalty. Uh, disclosure, one more person, thank we get in contact every year. If, if for a dollar on, on a tax roll, that would have to go, we won't have to go searching for them, they're coming in and paying them. We still have to look for offenders, in fact, they're gonna step up because our county deserves this, and, and please, but help, help us part away as well as make you meaningful, a level reliever. Let's take this one chance and make British county a leader. And I encourage you all to do that, uh. Again, we play okay to save billers money, they all take it for seven years, but they come and pay three year up and no penalty. Uh, I think you can generate a lot of money that we desperately need, uh. So, uh, Roy Darrell, make a motion and I say that, and I'm gonna take it up for vote, uh, Bill of change.
We already addressed that, well.
No. Tony Bush.
Already been addressed, no.
Roy Darrell. Uh, may I know?
No.
Again, I'm gonna connect through a discussion. Uh. Why wouldn't you give, give us a chance to be a leader? And have people come in and just volunteer to pay three year back taxes and eliminate, give them some relief, and make it play it operate. You might wanna say anything then? I don't have a guess, no. Consideration of approval for page J H specified contract for nineteen thousand five hundred dollars for service performed on straight break road, Hill Road, and Four Shop Road. This work was done back in January twenty nineteen, uh, I don't know if they kept submitting statements for a while, but, uh. Two months ago, I got a bill and they never saw it. And again, I don't know why they never been put on the claim with, but it happened, and I'll take a motion to pay that.
We agreed, paid them, you didn't write a check to her, why ain't you written a check to pay them?
Uh, I want in that, you, you missed that, you know, security.
Oh, what, ten thirty, bud?
Motion to pay, you made that motion.
Why ain't you written these people a check, why you have to write on and spend this trouble to me?
I'll second that motion. Tony Bush, yay or nay?
Oh.
Bill of change, yay or nay?
No, I write a big rich.
Ray Moore?
How hard is writing a check?
Oh, it's already been addressed.
Bill of change. How do you, I mean, I want to hear one second.
Write a big check. Oh, I got that.
You missed a meeting, remember this?
Sorry, been proved, you write the check.
Approved that he'll leave a meeting, honey. Consideration and approval for Ms. Sharp, by the U.S. former county trader, to do all formerly adhered to the end of the order between eighteen and nineteen, as well as the settlement and every time the same. And I'll second.
We already proved her to do that, in fact, it should all have been done.
Do we have another second? No more second, no motion, Ray Moore?
We've already.
Ray Moore, yay or nay?
Oh, yes.
Yay or say?
Yes.
Bill of change.
Yes.
Tony Bush.
Yes.
Roy Darrell.
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, consideration and approval of payment of T D imperator's C P A for support of the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen audit, a special independent auditor, specified approved for this audit by the Office of Audit of Public Accounting of the County of Oklahoma, Kentucky. Have a motion on that.
This audit is addressed at the June twenty eighth meeting.
Are you making a motion?
Special meeting.
Are you making a motion?
It's already been addressed at the June twenty eighth special meeting.
Motion carries. Can you say that, Don?
Oh.
Judges must, they don't have to pay that before they do audit. No, I'm not paying before they do the audit. Anything before.
I think it was the approval requirement, I didn't, so it's, okay.
I want a second to add motion, uh, Roy Darrell. Ray Moore?
No.
Bill of change.
No.
Tony Bush.
No.
Assigning the compensation, Ms. Sharp, paid for services of county finance officers and county health coordinator.
Oh.
Charlotte is not currently employed with British county.
Do we have a second on that?
As of June the third, and she is not employed.
Do we have a second on that?
Want to make any, make a motion for the judge.
Make a motion to sign a compensation to Ms. Sharp.
What man?
What man?
We have to send her, we have to send her. Her, her previous payment, yes, we'd say. What she made, everybody, uh, I don't know what she made, everybody.
She's not employed yet.
Well, uh, three years.
Her contract ran out in three years, on June the third, she is not employed with British county Fifth Court.
Okay.
So why you wanna pay someone that's not employed with British county Fifth Court?
You listen to me now, listen to you. It seem like we have a simple problem, you don't have fun to be misunderstanding the word executive and administrative.
Oh, you pretty much made that clear, you're all over.
You see, I know this, because K R S sixty seven point seven ten exclusively preserved, be, and executive administrative fair of the court, as well as sole right to execute all contract of the county. But for some reason, you don't seem to think you have, have something to say here.
Contract, you got contract, Charlotte?
Hey, you listen to me, now I know, I know the law doesn't mean a whole bunch, but, uh, surely we put it together at the job description. For it can tell me what the county health insurance coordinator does. They see that all of our county employees are eligible to have health insurance, now correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but they give me that health insurance is connection with employees, right? Somebody's gonna do it. And since instead, they mean to ensure our employees, their insurance benefits is part of the executive or their employment contract. Something you all, something you all have no power to do, know how I know, because K R S sixty seven, one sixty seven point seven, one, said I do. Now, since you all don't have a power to employ anyone to serve this function, that means that when you all decide to create a position of a county health insurance coordinator, y'all must have thought that you needed to be assistant to help, help out, and you sure he was right about that. And I appreciate that, I miss want.
The county judge.
K R S sixty seven, one seven eleven, says that any assistant served exclusively at my pleasure, and I appoint him at will. Uh, go back to the Adam and Co, that you booked, you got. That means that work, they work when I tell them to, they do what I tell them to, and they work as long as I tell them to. There was no say from you, the best part, all since K R S sixty seven point seven one one specified, isn't subject to K R S sixty seven point seven one oh. I can appoint and dispense them, I always know help from you. They give me the power to do that. Isn't that something, how about a county finance officer? Well, since you all identified administrator code that I am a target for finance management of the county, and is in there. Given the county finance officer duties are unquestionably my executive nature. And specified stated in chapter five. That my office can serve as a county finance officer, I guess that must mean my nine six two. Heck, even if it don't, even if it's not, you all have way longer rights to consent, and even if it's lucious. Says at seven point one D, and I'll read that to you. Listen to that, Adam. It's on page ninety five, you wanna go down a little bit sometime. Uh, D says, a good executive may dedicate performance of all, apart of all persons' duty by appointing a designated. Who might turn dedicated duties and needed appropriate personnel under his or hers supervision. So.
I guess more of the Frank Allen, the ruler, said not the ring, the ring.
It's all good, be very respectful.
Okay.
Again.
These are the rules, right?
Uh, so when said that sixty seven assistants, I can just have one of them all the way when I want them, please, here, uh. That my office can serve with county finance officer, I guess that must mean my assistant too, and then I don't say we won't, I just read seven one one D. That you, I can appoint someone who exclusively do the county finance officer, so you don't, you don't have a power to say so, it wasn't about, about that. Now, I know you're seeing, Redman, and people have their, the fear on you. Hey, R S sixty seven, one seven eleven, does give you one job, and that is to set a reasonable salary, and that's what I'm asking you to do for this position. Now, I'm sure you already know, I appointed Charlotte, you may not know more, but I, I appointed Charlotte as county health insurance coordinator and county finance officer a few weeks last. So you can forget about the June thirty, if you don't. She's not employed as a treasurer, but she is employed as a county finance officer.
You've already got.
I'm telling you right now, that's the chief administrator officer in this county, and that, that's I. I have assigned her this office, that she is to perform her duties, I am performing, uh, please, I have assigned her this office. To perform her duties, and I have provided the county treasurer a space to do his job in the courthouse, some people thinks it's a border room, it's not a, you wanna.
Where's that? Where's that?
Uh, yesterday.
You want a free, right?
Uh, I had my dad's, he was set up yesterday, but till then, I've been in the courtroom.
Or at, where's your office at?
One oh three.
Down in the basement.
At one oh three?
Uh, it is near one oh three now.
I think. Border room has never been one oh three, I don't think that's clear. So you have a choice to make, you can either sit Charlotte a reasonable salary for her performance to serve, for these services, like the statute says you have to. And live along the same as public servant, earn her return. With grace, before she, I think she can actually sue you for what, what you've done, and then talk to, help you after, after.
You, you would remove your.
Your office is removed.
Right ways.
That's up to, that's up to the judge, not the county.
She's not being removed, is it?
They said you can keep this, you can keep this one stone, while you're doing it costs to the county money.
I agree with that, you paying Chris Lee to do her position, now you wanna pay her, how many, how many times are we need?
Uh, that's, that's another story. I probably, you, I ain't got a role.
Ain't this part of the lives that next go down? Having to do anything to get the office out of there? After we make you a decision.
Anybody, anybody that's listening, I've almost done, uh.
Game, yeah.
You already have the choice, it's a choice you join, but I tell you one thing, Charlotte paid you, being in her office as long as she wants to be. Now, I make a motion to set her a salary.
So you're saying that even with Frank Allen rules, and not as your favor, does she still want to occupy that office?
Now, now I've accepted motion to set her a salary, what reasonable sal, what kind of salary would you want? Making a motion to set her. Do you have a motion to set a salary?
I can help.
And what? And what?
Forty three.
Forty three, that's a little less than she paid in the treasury.
So you gonna pay her forty three, and you gonna pay Chris for forty one?
He, he, he's, he's made a motion to pay each Charlotte paid you forty three thousand dollars. Uh, I have not mentioned Chris, well, I don't know if we can.
She is acting as my natural officer, and I, and I.
She is one. She has, she has not been acting a financial officer yesterday in terms of.
She's getting paid for it, is it?
For that one.
She's getting paid for it?
We, we'll talk about just as.
Is you not?
We need to justify later, but, uh, that, that, we only talked in here, one thing we not discussed was on this special, special venue. Lord Earl made a motion to set a salary at forty three. I want a second to that.
Let me ask you this, is it, have you budgeted it for it, the budget? Which I haven't seen.
No, I made, I made a budget of, and you all changed, uh, forty seven things in it, you know what you changed?
Is it in or out?
Did you?
We, we, if you, if we grant you her forty three thousand dollars, we're gonna get money, the budget's already crewed.
How much money's in the budget, you know what a budget is, that's a projected amount of what you gonna spend, does that mean you spend that much?
I hear, we shut down?
Yeah, how much, how much is that worth in your hand? Probably don't get no more check.
You saying this ain't no good?
Uh, I don't approve it, but yeah, it mean it's good.
You gonna bring it?
Are we gonna get that much?
Where you gonna need the money at?
You come up with three hundred and one thousand we got last year, I said, I don't think it's good. So, but again, they've been a motion on the floor to place that, uh, Charlotte forty three thousand dollars, Roy Darrell has made a motion, and I second it, Tony Bush.
No.
Uh, Roy Darrell. Ray Moore?
No, I don't think we wrote on it, because.
Uh, Bill of change.
Being in the name of, which Frank Allen Fletcher.
Okay.
And you just stated it.
Motion carries. So long.
Right, Brandon?
Discussion and approval of pay table, twenty nineteen, twenty entered in amount of two hundred and eighty three thousand eight hundred forty four dollars.
All right, Judge, I got the invoices, right here, Sue Porter, who is our main insurance agent, emailed me the invoices. They told, and this includes workers comp, your general liability auto, everything, plus the volunteer fire department insurance premium, that comes to two hundred and seventy eight thousand eight hundred fifty two dollars and seventy cents. Now, the, the volunteer fire department insurance, that's paid quarterly, so we have to pay that, the other. Two invoices I have here, that total two hundred sixteen thousand four thirty nine, they gave us two ways to pay, and that's one of the decisions y'all have to make. Option number one, you can pay it all in full by eight and one, and two hundred sixteen thousand four hundred thirty nine dollars, and you get a one percent discount off that.
Two, two sixteen one?
Two hundred sixteen thousand four hundred thirty nine dollars, eight, less one percent discount, whatever that's come to, good. One percent, we got twenty seven, twenty one hundred dollars.
And?
Or option number two, we pay fifty percent by eight and one, and then the other fifty percent is broken into three monthly payments. With the last one being made in October. Now, my recommendation, we don't, in my opinion, we don't have an extra two hundred sixteen thousand dollars, is to go ahead and pay it month to sum for a one percent discount. In my opinion, uh, the second option authorizes me to pay the fifty percent by eight and one, and then three monthly payments to October, would be what, would be in our best season.
Okay, uh, I must go to the wrong, the total you said was two seventy eight, eight fifty two seven.
Yeah.
If we pay for it in full with two sixteen four thirty nine?
No, if we pay for it in full, we get a one percent discount.
What was that amount?
That'd be twenty one hundred, sixty four dollars and thirty nine cents.
It's two sixteen four thirty.
Where'd you come up with two hundred fifteen four thirty nine?
Two hundred sixteen thousand four thirty nine, that's the sum of our workers comp, big insurance, and then our general liability auto, all that.
Does that include the fire department?
No, the fire department separate, we can make four quarterly payments a year, that's the volunteer fire department's not even in, they've already settled our payment schedule on that.
Um, we don't have money to pay, pay it month to sum and get a one percent discount?
Two hundred sixteen thousand dollars.
Uh, we two seventy eight, eight fifty two, we gonna pay it all?
Two, two hundred sixteen thousand four hundred thirty nine dollars, less one percent discount, which would be about twenty one hundred dollars off, so you're looking at about two hundred fifteen thousand three hundred for it.
Where are the other sixty two thousand coming in, or are we?
The other sixty two thousand is your volunteer fire department insurance, we pay that quarter before that.
Okay.
So that's, so what I have to have is a decision. On the other insurance, that comes to two hundred sixteen thousand four thirty nine, either option one, pay it month to sum with a one percent discount, that'll be do by eight and one. And it'll be roughly two hundred fifteen thousand three hundred dollars. Or we can pay half of it by eight and one, which would be about a hundred and eighty thousand. And then take the other fifty percent, break it down over the next three months, August, August, and June, October.
Will you pay, we pay half of it?
Now that's, I think that's what.
That's option two, right?
Yes.
Again, the volunteer fire department should have to be paid down.
Yeah, I agree, and that's totally separate.
Okay, here's how I want to make the motion, this, uh, approval of pay pay call, uh, twenty nineteen twenty entered in amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Even.
And I would, I would, uh, put it in, uh, to, to do option two, take fifty percent of it by eight, one. And then the other fifty percent by October as late payment?
Uh, maybe at the end of September, eight, nine, eight, ten, one.
And then also to pay quarterly, the volunteer fire department.
Yeah.
Anybody want to make a motion on that?
Motion, say.
And, uh, which made a motion? Hill, Kinger. Donnie Bush. Probably, uh, they will. I want to be directed for approval of signing this.
Okay, don't waste my time, I have a lot on it.
Uh, she's looking to lay a note on it.
Okay.
Uh, consideration of approval of special policy for county values through by Carver, Carvin and Associates, CPA. Uh, well, I guess, uh, that, that hasn't been beat it out, I don't think, and it says, uh, didn't beat anything out here, y'all, y'all taking bids on that?
No, I've been.
Okay, no bids, no soliciting. I'm not proving anything, especially for you all to run off and give a bloody stone lecture person to come and tell how stupid we are. If you all want a special policy, you can make a motion, approval special, I have to report soliciting your bid, you can come back another day. But it ain't going to happen today. And the bidding's so big.
You're paying twenty thousand?
I'll take ninety-five, take ninety-five. Section seven point two, bids and award process. A request for goods and or services is called less than twenty thousand or on annual bid. Or for which exists state pricing contracts are not required to be purchased through the competitive bidding process procedure. However, the competing bid process may be used at any time to obtain competition, competitive, competitive pricing. When a competitive bidding procedure desired, the department of the head must have a financial report approval and consulting with the physical report prior to advertising for bid. And it says the county judge shall determine the these for any hour for whether or not purchase a contract less than twenty thousand or explicit and provided for bid. So, again, if y'all want to do that, you'd have to come another day.
I'll make that motion, I say it.
Uh, it'll be a come another day. Y'all, have y'all got any bids?
Got a motion on the floor.
Have you got any bids?
Got a second.
We got a competitive, we haven't beat it out.
Did that over a bump, Brandon? Did you call it for a bump, Judge?
No, I did not. I told him we'd take it up another day.
Did you open, did you open the floor?
No, I didn't want to be interrupted when I was talking. Number twenty-six, termination of roof.
Is this one already been addressed?
No.
Has this not been addressed to one of the three, one of the three, four of the times?
No, one of the things in the other meeting.
So what, what is this?
They want to have, they want to have an auditor come in here.
It's a professional, it's a professional service contract, not exactly. It can be contracted, a professional service contract is.
And it's then have to be beat it out.
Or, or a, uh, or a, um, CPA, for that reason. So what's? And what, what's the problem?
It hasn't, it hasn't been beat it out, I mean, we can't just say.
Well, it's a professional service contract, didn't have to be that.
Why, right there.
It said a request for goods and services which cost less than twenty thousand or, or annual bids, unless a state, uh, state pricing contract or not paid reports.
But it's a professional service contract. You don't have attorneys bid against each other, and CPA bid against each other.
But this has already been approved by Congress of Kentucky to come in here and have what they want to, uh, to do. State of the state, uh, I, I had this approved about two months ago when one of the meetings, they didn't attend. And you, uh, auditor of public account, the Congress of Kentucky, already approved about twenty nineteen twenty done.
They just approved, same as Brandon's, an approved attorney.
It's less than twenty thousand, it's less than twenty thousand, I've already approved it to be done.
He's got the candy, Judge, you don't have to beat it out.
If it's under twenty thousand, it's all, and I've already, that's what I'm saying, I've already contracted, uh, Teddy Fraser to come and do the performance of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, ten.
Play twenty, play your, play six thousand. Maybe it's got six thousand, which one you got there?
Uh, is that the price on here, six thousand?
That's, that's annual, cold.
Is that, is that here the price?
Forty-seven.
Yes, twenty-five, seven thousand, seven.
Yeah, that ain't right.
There we go.
You don't.
We bring it up in there.
We've got a motion on the floor, we've got a second, the hardest.
How much is it? Give us the amount.
He said it was seven thousand dollars annually.
No, seven, you went up a thousand, it's six minutes ago.
Twenty-five and seven, right, you want to talk about that?
And just beat it out.
Here, here's the next question, got it. Is anything out of this meeting that's approved going to be honored, do I need to add to the, to the casings? I mean, I mean, this is all just placed. Everything that's going on is, is contested when you got.
We approved, sir, you don't have to say.
Did you already, did you already approve this, is that what I'm saying?
Citizens, we sit here for two hours.
Are you, are you saying, are you saying this is already been approved?
We have voted for, Judge.
Did you already vote on this, that's what Brandon asked you, is that what you're on the court, y'all say?
No, I asked you, but it already been addressed, because, you know, if there's a decision that comes at one of those meetings, is, the meeting.
Have you got your name?
No. So, this is a new eye.
So why, why, why you say it's a waste of time, man?
This arguing.
Huh?
This arguing. We went over some of this stuff, we spent on this, our agenda, three different times. Just because you recognize a meeting, that we had a, a, approval of, majority of the physical court, you will write these people a check, we got to come back in here, do this again, satisfy you, these people back, they want their money.
Again, Donnie, what was they? You know, Mr. Baker, we're going at six thirty.
I'm in on corner of county attorney. He was fresh, right, we asked him for where you would conduct the meeting, he's sitting right back there. He's leaving the meeting.
Okay, when you said.
We got a motion on the floor.
Consideration approval of first reading budget.
Are you going to take a vote, are you, are you going to take a vote on the motion or not?
We don't have what to put on here, I don't, we can't.
Uh, if your answer is no, then your answer is no.
No, we got, I can't.
Well, most of that's safe, we get, he confused it up. I guess you need to add that to the list.
All right, consideration approval of first reading budget amendment number one, solid waste recycling rate. The motion, I, I'm open now. Number twenty-seven, consideration approval payment for trade for bond free insurance. Can the insurance pay in the citizen bank trust to be accessed?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Motion, I didn't say it.
Uh, Hill, Kinger.
Aye.
Donnie Bush.
Aye.
Go ahead. Considerate, no, yeah, I have a motion. Consideration approval stop payment order in the company, voting any.
Back up, bro.
Yeah, we went to.
No, no.
We don't. No, twenty-six. Sixteen thousand dollars, and we have to get them in the past before we can write.
Make sure the certain ones that go and vote on, I guess it is now.
Any of them.
If y'all make a motion on that.
I'm going to call one minute.
And I make a motion.
Number twenty-six, solid waste, you don't pay what you owe.
Consideration approval of stop payment order and. Is it real, we got a bill from the other?
Yeah.
Actually, I, I would have a bill come through.
The state sent, regret county will case, uh, recycling return to regret county. We have to turn around and disperse more kind of their money.
So I'm going to ask you, have we got a bill? In what?
Yes, we have got, that we're not got the one split.
Fifty-five days of solid waste coordinator, you know.
Right. That's what, that's what we are.
Solid waste coordinator, I know these answers to these questions being asked.
Uh, quiet in there. Consideration approval stop payment order and void in any of all. Is with your nineteen checks, that'd be grand claim, other than for your proof standing order, not approved by the physical court.
Motion.
That you raised it?
Yes.
Donnie Bush.
Aye.
Go in there.
No.
Name on. Hill, Kinger. Motion, Harry. Proof to enter contract cash transfer from General to M A O G D A in amount of twenty thousand. And you, that really won't let me.
Yeah, I'll tell you, at the end of the year, after the outstanding checks cleared, we have a free balance for like fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars. Uh, cause every month quarterly payment won't be until the end of July. And so if we transfer this money, that'll cover, you pay off for July your health insurance, providing all that, and carry us to a good or, cause every month.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion, say.
Donnie Bush. Hill, Kinger.
Aye.
Donnie Bush.
Aye.
Go in there. Three more. Consideration of motion orders removed, motion, Miss Shorty Pating from the courthouse, that she is currently occupied, to prohibit her from occupying any other office under judicial, under the present physical court, and she no longer an employee of the county. The KRS sixty seven one forty, the physical court, shall have the care and custody of all the courthouse at the county assembly. The court rooms, the officers therein, and the public ground adjacent thereto, and shall have authorities in addition to levy and collect property taxes necessary for the purpose of keeping up and maintaining the courthouse in the ground in proper condition and repair, to prevent injuries thereto, to keep them in proper state of cleanliness and sanitation, to provide heat and life support, and provide sufficient order for the court and office therein. Thus creating the physical court, rob levies over the office of the courthouse. This however no longer takes. I bet you wish it would, but it says here, uh, you see, like I said, the law had changed in the court in a big way in seventy-eight. After we lost our judiciary power, when the general assembly decided to best all in fifty, the administrative power to the court and my office. The laws just changed, and after that included the law in the KRS sixty seven one forty. Re, the physical court, you have authorities and jurisdiction to levy and collect property taxes necessary for the purpose for the purpose of keeping and maintaining the courthouse and the ground in proper condition and repairs, to prevent injuries thereto, to keep them in a proper state of cleanliness and sanitation, to provide heat and life for them, and provide sufficient order through the county and office therein. Yes, y'all lost all your power with that office, you want a writ win. My office in your week, no, KRS sixty seven one thirty, argument. Argument about the operations of the home order, just checking the opinion of the division, division of the general office, which says you can't even hire superintendent of the building anymore, even though the statute says you can. But this would be my job now, to do whatever you want about Charlotte's office. But I'm not hearing any motion on the court to attempt estatuaire outside the bounds of parish, therefore, out of order.
I guess, that's another way on Frank Allen rule, right, Brandon?
Uh, there was, ain't been discussed, I think it.
Well, that was a post-sake.
I think y'all, y'all been making, y'all been making, what, didn't you just?
Post-sake term, whenever you let what was written.
I'm about to make a request going on.
I just always take me personally and ask about the statute.
Sorry to be. So this one is twenty-six, and I, I will put back up, consideration of approval for the first, senior officer for the first. Oh, the first reading of the word you gave for number one. Well, this act of struggle will do, you just throw it back.
Motion, say.
Right on.
Yes.
Hill, Kinger. Donnie Bush.
Aye.
Go in there. Motion, Harry. Uh.